Pardon, we're starting to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meeting Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session in a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 16, 2019, at 4:45 and at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, 78520. We're going to start with executive sessions. Executive Session A Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section 551 Point 0711 to Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with proposals for commercial and industrial solid waste collection services requested under RFP-CIS 47-0917, threaten litigation regarding the proposal process and related legal issues pertaining to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations. Executive B Discussion pursuant to Section 551 Point 087 of the Texas Government Code regarding economic development. Executive C Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551 Point 0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive D Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551 Point 0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive D E Discussion pursuant to Section 551 Point 072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value to real property.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
City Secretary, please note that I will not be participating in item A.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe and holy God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the prayer. And tonight, we have the treat of having our former city chaplain, Bob Clark, to do the prayer. He was the chaplain for 20 years before I came on, and he's also helping with the National Day of Prayer now. So, Bob Clark?
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight seeking your wisdom, seeking your help, seeking your guidance for every department of the city of Brownsville. Lord, our people need you. We need you, and we ask for your help and guidance. Lord, particularly, we have a new police chief. I particularly want to pray for the police department and our new chief, that everything that he decides is best for Brownsville will become true, and may our jails go down in population and not increase. Lord, continue to bless the city. It's up and coming time for the hurricane season, and as I did for 20 years, I prayed for no hurricanes. So, Lord, honor those past prayers and keep it alive for this year, and may those tremendous storms be blown away from the city of Brownsville. Lord, thank you for listening to our prayer. Thank you for acting on our prayer, and in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Actions and items discussed in executive session. Action Executive B Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the TERS, Madera, Espirito Santo, Santander, TERS Number 1, and Annex Palo Alto Groves Rio Grande Esplanade Project, City Initiated Downtown University Park, TERS Number 2.
Good to see you again. Travis James with TXP. I'll go through what we discussed. The recommendation is to support the creation of a new TERS in the North Morrison Road area, to support creating a city-initiated downtown TERS, to conditionally support creating a Rio Grande Esplanade TERS pending additional information and analysis, to decline as submitted, extending the duration or boundaries and timeline of the existing Santander TERS, the Palo Alto Groves TERS, and the Madero TERS. And the final recommendation is to terminate TERS Number 2, University Park.
May your motion. So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action Executive E has been removed by city staff. Mayor's activity update?
Nothing to report this time.
Commissioners' activity update?
I have one update, and it's going to be actually a proclamation for National Day of Prayer, considering that it's the week before Easter. So, at this time, I would like to welcome everybody of all of the different walks of faith that are here today to represent the community of Brownsville.
I think we're going to ask you, Bob's going to sit, okay?
So, the National Day of Prayer is going to be May the 2nd, right? And, May the 2nd, and it's going to be at the event center?
Sam Stadium.
Sam Stadium, I'm sorry. Right in front of me. Here we go. So, the National Day of Prayer is going to be May the 2nd at 6:30 PM at Sam Stadium in Brownsville, Texas. The entire public is welcome. It's a free event, and I highly encourage everybody in our community to experience this. What it is, is under, you know, in one stadium, everybody from all walks of faith come together and pray for our community and the success and prosperity and good things, and it's so moving to see it happen right after Easter. So, I'll go ahead and begin. Proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating May 2nd as National Day of Prayer, whereas at the end of World War II, 33rd United States President Harry S. Truman declared August 16, 1945, a day of prayer. In 1952, President Truman made National Day of Prayer an annual observance stating, "In times of national crisis, when we are striving to strengthen the foundations of peace, we stand in special need of divine support. Whereas, women and men of all background and beliefs are free to practice their faith without fear or coercion, it bolsters our religious communities and helps to lift up diverse and vibrant societies throughout our world. Whereas, in times of trepidation, prayer is a powerful force of peace, justice, a brighter and more hopeful tomorrow, and in times of jubilation, prayer can unite a community in gratitude, goodwill, and fellowship. Whereas, the spiritual guidance provided by the religious congregations in Brownsville has strengthened our community by inspiring residents to serve their neighbors through charitable acts for the betterment of all." And now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate May the 2nd National Day of Prayer and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to practice gratitude in accordance with their own beliefs for the freedoms of our nation and the grace of prayer, done on this 16th day of April, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. I know we have friends here with you all. You've been becking us, becking prayer up for many years, and I really appreciate you. Like the Commissioner said, it's for all denominations, only the ones that believe on the cross. We're calling the soldiers of the cross to come out. That one day, and I was using the Bible verse 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people who are called by my name would humble and pray." This is the two words we're using, humble and pray, so we know that we're going to get open heaven over Brownsville, which we need miracles, we need blessings from heaven. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, each one of you. Thank you for this.
We'll see you on May 2nd, okay?
Thank you.
I might mention that I will introduce all the public officials that are there, and then the students will be praying for all of you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? City Manager's update?
Mayor, Commissioners, a few updates. The first one being, this Friday, in observance of Good Friday, we will be closed. The office of the City Secretary, however, will be open from 9 to 12 in support of the election. We also have the election starting on Monday, April 22nd. The polling place information is available on our website at www.cob.us. There is a page dedicated just to the election. All the information can be found there. Also, the city of Brownsville continues to support our local nonprofit organizations as we assist migrants released by the U.S. Customs and Border Protection. We do want to thank our community volunteers, our staff, and the nonprofits who have shown their support, their empathy, their time, their heart in helping with this effort. And also, just for the community's sake, that we have been pursuing this as a disaster. So, what that means is that we're using all measures the city has to document and process this through FEMA and the Texas Division of Emergency Management, TIDOM, because we do intend to seek full reimbursement for any cost and all costs the city has incurred thus far and will continue to incur since we don't have a timeline for this, from when this will end from the federal government, but we will pursue every remedy, every measure to ensure that our funds are reimbursed. That's all I have.
Proclamation. We have the National Service Recognition Day.
Come on up here, girls.
Welcome. Okay, the proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designated April the 2nd, 2019, as National Service Recognition Day. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. Whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities. They educate students for the 21st century jobs, fight the opioid epidemic, respond to national disasters, and support veterans and military families. Whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas, national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April the 2nd, 2019. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby designate April the 2nd, 2019, as National Service Recognition Day, and further urge all of its residents to examine how they may contribute their talents and energy in service of their community, done on this 16th day of April, 2019. Signed, Mayor Tonya Martinez and the City Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Major and City Council. As it was mentioned, National Service Recognition Day is about recognizing the thousands of volunteers that either through AmeriCorps or Senior Corps are helping our community. And right here, you have in front of you representatives from three local programs that are helping Brownsville, either teaching our children, such as Teach for America, and then we have two programs that are helping our students, our senior students, with the college enrollment process. So, thank you very much for joining us in this, in recognizing their service.
Well, thank you for all you do, and thank all of you guys for all the work that you're doing. Keep it up, okay? It's a great work. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Now, we have the presentations. We have the Growth Land Use Report.
So, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Felix Landry will be presenting this report. You all have seen earlier versions of this. This is, one, the final report, and also one for public consumption. I just want to say that when we had a TERS workshop on February the 9th, we committed to a two-to-three month timeframe to give you all recommendations, which we have met that on the prior item by Mr. James. We also committed to starting the dialogue on a growth strategy. What that basically means is that we want to make sure that we have a fiscal approach to how we grow. Now, Brownsville has been growing, and we're doing the analysis to determine and to show the community how that growth has helped the city be financially sustainable. What this is, it's a report of where we are. It's a snapshot of how we have been developing, but also, it gives us a baseline so that we can start working from here to make adjustments where necessary so that we grow in a way that reflects, one, the values of the community, but also allows us to address the various needs, whether they be services or infrastructure and quality of life. Growth can accomplish that for us, but we have to make sure that we are managing it properly, so this is a starting point for further conversations we're going to have with stakeholders in the community about all things growth.
Howdy. I'm Felix Landry. I work with Verdunity, and we do planning and fiscal analysis and engineering, and over time, let's see if this works. Do I need to point it? Okay, so, over time, we have been focusing a lot more on the fiscal analysis and trends that we've been seeing with cities. Most of our American cities, a lot of cities in Texas, have been racing to the next, you know, great place to live, best community in America, and while we've been investing, we've kind of overlooked, in a lot of cases, the idea of what's it going to cost to maintain these things that we build. So, we've noticed a lot of cities that we get invited to work in, they have escalating costs and a shrinking budget to pay for those costs and meet those needs. And a lot of times, it's road maintenance, it's extra police and fire services, it's things that come from the general fund and often come from property taxes. So, cities all over the country are running out of money. There's just not enough coming in to keep up with basic maintenance. So, some of our analysis is going to be, a lot of it's going to be based around this idea. Thank you. So, we'll start off with a very small, local example. The street you're about to see is here, for bigger context. We're going to look at the south end of East 32nd Street off East Avenue. Okay, so, just a little bit of insight into what we're doing, if you look at the lots fronting on the street, you have about a little bit over $950,000 of taxable value, which per year brings in just over $6,000 in revenue from property taxes. This length of road with the cul-de-sac, if you take industry standards, which say for the replacement cost for streets, about $800,000 to $1.2 million per lane mile, so if it's a two-lane street, it's $2 million per mile. If we fall in the middle at $1 million per lane mile, this street alone is going to cost $206,000 to replace. Now, most streets have a shelf life, 40 or 50 years, but with the revenue coming in per year and the replacement value of this street, it would take a little over 33 years to pay off incrementally the cost of this street. Now, it generates that much, but we haven't even considered the cost of police, fire, parks, libraries, city administration, all the other things that property taxes also pay for and that citizens need and want. So, even on a small example, you can see where the shortfall lies. When I was with the city of Fort Worth, working with the city, we took that small example and we applied it to the entire city. We did a citywide analysis, and what you see here in the map is all of your blue parcels and shades of blue are not making enough money to pay for themselves when all the city services are considered. The green parcels are making enough money, the orange parcels are making more than enough and are subsidizing other parts of town. So, we looked at this, we did the map, we did the analysis for the whole city. We started looking at patterns and trends that might help us. So, on the left, you can see a table of the land use categories. This is how they performed in Fort Worth. You can see some land use categories do a better job of paying for themselves than others, and you can also see in the city that there are geographic trends that tend to take place. And what we focused in on are, does this point, does this show up there?
Yes.
So, if I do this, oh, yeah, all right. So, this is, south side, this is really cool. So, south side of Fort Worth had a lot of vacating parcels. A lot of people were moving out of this area. They had just kind of reached a point not long ago where they got the full suite of services, where they had all the fire, all the police, all the streets, all the parks and libraries they could ever want. Now, all the revenue's moving out, and it's moving down here. And so, what you had was a part of town that looked okay. It looked like it was performing well, but what hadn't happened was they hadn't got their full suite of services yet. So, at a point where they needed to invest back in this area, they didn't have the revenue to do it coming from that area. And as the area south of town was starting to develop, it looked good, but over time, it was going to end up looking like the interior of the city. So, based on the patterns, we started looking at context zones. So, we looked at land use patterns that performed well, and you can go through the next two slides. So, all these land use patterns performed well. Go to the next one. So, we found types of single-family homes that performed well, and we found types of commercial districts that performed well, and then we identified those parts of town that had costs that were coming up but performing poorly in revenue, and we targeted economic development incentives in those areas. So, if we take a look at, let's see, go to the next slide. If you take that principle and you apply it to land use planning practices, what you can do is look at, this is an example from the city of Fayette that we did. The first map on the left is just their existing conditions. They're a tiny town east of Dallas. The green parcels make money, the red parcels don't. When you add in just their replacement cost for streets, you get the second map, and you get a lot more dark red, you get some green parcels that turn red, because they weren't considering that. They had a growing need in street maintenance that they weren't covering with their property taxes. Some of their idea was that, well, as they continue to develop, the increased revenue will pay for it, but they weren't counting on the increase in streets too, and the increased need for police and fire. So, the third map is we did a build-out scenario of their land use plan, and while some of the parcels did pick themselves up as they redeveloped, most of the parcels did not based on their land use pattern. So, in the end, they had a $72 million deficit to make up. So, you can go to the next slide. So, when you get to Brownsville, what you see is property taxes do make up a big chunk of the budget, as they do in most cities. Go ahead. And when you look at land use patterns in Brownsville, these two pie charts are, they focus on the patterns based on taxing purposes. So, on the left, you'll see the proportion of total revenue for each land use. So, of all the revenue generating parcels in the city, 72% of them are residential and 19% of them are commercial. But when you look at the cost burden, there's lots of costs being created by other types of land use that aren't creating as much revenue, such as vacant parcels or agricultural parcels. This is where some of the breakdown happens when we do planning and we have development patterns that we're not accounting for fiscally. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, all right. So, this is an interesting breakdown as well. You have on the left the number of lots, so the count in each land use. So, 80% of your number of lots are residential, and on the right, you actually have the footprint of those lots. So, while 80% of the total number of lots you have are residential, those lots are only taking up 24% of the footprint of the city. Now, the big thing that hinders most cities, and what you saw in Fort Worth on their interior, are those vacant parcels. While total number-wise, it's only 14%, if you look at the footprint, a lot of those vacant parcels have high cost burdens because they used to be developed. They're taking up 26% of your city. So, those are parcels that have a high cost burden and a very, very low revenue output. Go to the next slide. So, this is Brownsville. This is the analysis we ran. This is looking at property taxes coming in and then property taxes going out for covering services. This reflects the current budget, and like any good city, Brownsville's current yearly budget is balanced, is a zero-sum budget, so you're not spending more than you're taking in. And in that light, it looks great. You have lots of green parcels, you have darker green parcels in areas that do better, such as downtown and some of your commercial corridors and some of your denser residential developments. But if you go to the next slide, when you add the street replacement cost and just the overall financial burden of having a street network for the city of Brownsville's size, the cost burden becomes much more than the current property tax system can handle. So, if you put yourself on a plan to say, well, the average shelf life for a street's 40 or 50 years, no matter how many times you fill in potholes, eventually you'll need to redo the street, and you apply that to your whole street network, for all the streets you're responsible for at least, you end up with a $65 million annual deficit, which is not that different from most cities, but it's a big number, and it's something that, you know, as we move forward, you'll need to think about and consider. When you look at these maps, it's showing ROI, so return on investment. So, what that means, if you look at the legend in the top right, it'll have your ROI segments. With ROI, a dollar is your break-even. It means for every dollar you spend, you get a dollar back. And if all of our parcels perform that well, we'd be good to go. Some parcels do better, so in the green, you have some segments that for every dollar you spend, you get $10 back. That's great. They're paying for themselves and they're paying for others. For a lot of the red parcels, you're spending money, a dollar, in services, and you're only getting 40 cents back in revenue. So, that's where the problems lie. If you go to the next slide, it becomes almost easier to see when you do a 3D map. So, this is Brownsville again. We just tilted it, and the ROI magnitude is shown in the vertical height of the bars. So, the darker the bar, the higher it's going to get, the darker green. And this is the current budget, so you can see parts of town. Some parts perform better than others. When you go to the next slide, you can see the impact just looking at street replacement costs adds and where a lot of that impact falls. So, something to look at here is you've got a similar phenomenon as in Fort Worth, what we called fiscal shift, is that the interior of the city has a full suite of services. It's got everything a citizen could want. It's got libraries, parks, police, fire. It's got streets. It's well-connected, but the revenue over time hasn't performed as well, or it's not performing as well now. And what you see on the outskirts is a lot of people have moved outside of the center, and so there's been an increase in revenue out there, but what's likely to happen is the cost is going to, it's a lagging indicator of cost. So, as more people move out, the costs are going to go up. So, go on to the next slide. A brief note on our methodology with street replacement costs. For this scenario, we did use $1 million per lane mile. For lane widths, we used 11-foot lanes. The total cost of the entire street network was about $1.3 billion. And like I mentioned earlier, if you divide it out into 20 years, you get $65 million a year. Go ahead. We can zoom in. It's always nice to zoom in. So, the next map we're going to see is this area. It's just going to be tilted, so it's not going to look so rectangular. So, go ahead. So, there's downtown in the forefront. As you move north along the highway, you can see undulations in the ROI, but your downtown is where most of your dark green parcels are. So, this is the current budget scenario, if you go to the next slide, and this is the, when you add street replacement costs. So, downtown still takes care of itself. There's something about downtown, whether it's the development pattern or the land uses in it, that is doing well, so it's worth looking into to see if that's replicable in other parts of the city. Go to the next slide. Next, we're going to look at this part of town. This is just. of town. This is just west of Morningside Park. Go ahead. And like I said, it's going to be tilted, so it's going to look a little different. So, you can see in the current budget, most of it does well and takes care of itself. If you go to the next slide. When you add the street replacement costs, it's a little bit of a different story. So, there is one area in the top left, it looks like part of a commercial corridor that does well, but for the rest of it, there are individual cases that do well and some don't. So, it's worth study. It's worth looking into to see what's feeding into parcels that do well and don't. Next slide. We did some of the land use breakdown so far. It helps to get into more detail. So, like in this case, this is a very simple chart. It looks just at residential, commercial, industrial, ag, and vacant. The green bars are your current budget. The orange bars are with the street costs added on. When you make it this simple, it's hard to say anything, because everything falls below that red-dotted break-even line. Go to the next one. When you break it out into finer detail, you'll see the single-family is now broken out into more categories, outlined in the yellow box. The multifamily, apartments, condos, things like that are broken out in the orange box. And then the red box has commercial-industrial broken out. And it's broken out in lot sizes. So, as you move left to right in that single-family, so as you go... These are your smallest lot-size single-families, and then it goes up in lot size as you move to the right. And the same thing for multifamily and commercial-industrial. So, there is a trend that when you consolidate lot sizes, at least in some areas, that your ROI tends to stay higher over more time. So, some of these land uses, when you break them out in finer detail, actually do survive adding the street replacement cost. Go to the next one. Something else we also find is a lot of cities tend to focus on the idea of the... Kind of the silver bullet, like what's the value of the home that we need to focus on. In a lot of cases, just a blanket improvement value, value of the structure, doesn't have a direct relationship with your revenue per acre. So, in this case, this is what you're seeing. And the orange bars... The orange bars are reflecting the average improvement value, so the average value of the structure, and these are just single-family homes. And as you go left to right, these are the lot sizes down here. So, these are your smallest lots, and then as you go to the right, the lots get bigger and bigger. When you just look at the average improvement value, there's a slight increase, but it's all relatively consistent. When you look at the green line, that's your revenue per acre. So, as you get bigger and bigger, at least in Brownsville so far, your revenue per acre actually drops. And that's most reflective of how your cost burden plays out for most city services that are paid for with property taxes. If you go to the next slide, the same trend you can see in commercial properties, that as you get to different lot-size segments, the average improvement value, the value of the structure, goes up dramatically, but the revenue per acre performance of the lots also dips. Go into the next slide. So, that was very fast, but if you have questions, I'm happy to stick around and chat some more. In the end, based on the data we've looked at and the analysis we've done, it makes a lot of sense, from our point of view, to invest in your downtown, to build a diverse mix of housing and commercial that currently exist down here, to expand on that, to incentivize infill in areas that already have a full suite of services but are maybe lacking existing development there that maybe it's been condemned or knocked down or destroyed in a natural event, to try to steer growth away from expansion on the edges in those infill areas, and then also to look at your land use development regulations and see if there are things you can adjust in your zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance that can maybe reflect some of the ways that the fiscal performance suggests might do better. And then on an infrastructure side, you know, just going from a lot of residential, like what we would call two-lane residential streets are actually like 32 feet wide. And so, cost-wise, it's actually going to cost you what a three-lane road's going to cost. So, there's a lot of things you can do in your infrastructure requirements for cities that also have a big fiscal impact. So, that's all I have right now.
Any questions for Felix?
No.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Felix. Appreciate it.
All right.
So, just a note, Mayor. We're having... So, the city had a vibrant lecture series going on years ago. We're going to restart that, and one of those later on this year, whether it's summer or fall, we're having one focused on growth. We'll bring this data out, we'll bring them back to talk about this. By that time, we'll have other data, since the city will be looking at its land use plan and zoning and ordinances and that type of thing. I do want to mention just a quick comment on that pie chart where you look at the industrial portion. It was around 5%. So, while the residential piece is pretty disproportionate, one of the strategies that stands out there is growing our commercial-industrial base to provide more relief to our rooftops and provide a better payback on our tax base. So, that's just one takeaway. There are many takeaways. There's a lot to digest there. Again, this is a baseline, and if I'm a citizen, what do you do and what does this mean? It's really just a baseline. It's a lot of information. It's one that will inform policy decisions and also inform how we work with our consultant team as we begin to approach growth and attach a business model, so to speak, so that we're not just growing to grow, but that we're growing to be fiscally whole at the end of the day. So, this is just a starting point.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Noel.
At this time, we're going to read item... Agenda item number 25. Action item number 25. Consideration in action to authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding and an agreement between the city of Brownsville and revival of cultural arts, commonly known as Carlota Petrina, for the operation of the Brownsville Performing Arts Academy.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, we respectfully request your consideration and action to approve an MOU and agreement with the revival of cultural arts, also known as Roca, for the operations of the Brownsville Performing Arts Academy. The children you see tonight in the blue t-shirts, and I'm going to ask them to stand up, please, with their parents, and also the staff from Roca, are very excited to see this academy being completed, along with the other members of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Love having you.
Thank you. The need. It is recognized that when youth are exposed to the arts, it helps build self-esteem and confidence. It is also recognized there are children in our community who do not have access or whose families cannot afford dance or music lessons. Challenges such as costs, transportation, et cetera, can prohibit a child to attend dance or music lessons, which may run about usually $80 a month. The community, including the city commission, city leadership and staff, nonprofits, and organizations saw the need and have supported the vision of increasing access to arts in Brownsville. And so, the transformation took place. The city undertook a significant community development project, partly made possible by the Community Development Block Grant Program through HUD, which consisted of the restoration of a historical property known as the Stegman Building, to serve as the Brownsville Performing Arts Academy. The mitigation of urban blight, the revitalization in the downtown district, and I would also like to add that this project is on track for the LEED program, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And so, right here, you'll see some pictures of the Stegman Building. As you can see, there was a lot of the decay and deterioration inside the building as well, in that hallway. The building is located at 543 East 11th Street, and it was built in 1912. It was named after Baldwin G. Stegman, who was one of the investors in the private franchise that was developed in Brownsville's first public street carline. So, there's a little bit of history there with the individual. It was a multi-use building that had living quarters for Mr. Stegman, and it had store rooms on the first floor, and the second floor was for the Elks Club Lodge Room. And then this is how the Performing Arts Academy building looks like. It's beautiful. So, you see the picture with the lobby. It has the original brick on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the reclaimed wood that was used. As far as the scope, the purpose of the academy is to provide direct services in the arts to low- and moderate-income families in Brownsville. A minimum of 51% of the students individuals served need to be from low-to-moderate-income families. These students, individuals, will receive services at no cost, and will receive the same instruction as paying students. So, it's really important to clarify that the academy is not a business, and it does not exist to make a profit and to compete against other schools. It is an academy that exists to provide a needed service in the community. As far as the academy operations, the city partnered with Roca, who has been an active driver of cultural activities in our community for numerous years. This nonprofit has under its care... A lot of you know it as Carlota Petrina Cultural Center, which is located in the Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood. Roca has worked with the community, including the Housing Authority for the city of Brownsville, and the city through HUD's Choice Neighborhood Initiative, understanding the importance of HUD programming and working with low-to-moderate-income families. The organization has helped connect Buena Vida Neighborhood to downtown, providing opportunities for all, experiencing the arts, creating comprehensive programs that are inclusive, holistic, and life-giving. And we added these pictures. So, on the left-hand side, you'll see the beautiful smiles from the children in the paper orchestra at Carlota Petrina, and on the right-hand side, these kids are receiving direct instruction from an individual, a founder who belongs to the Ballet de la Pana, who they were here recently. And she founded the Ballet de la Pana. I believe they're in New York, and she's from South Texas, so that was really exciting. Partnerships. Roca is working side-by-side with numerous organizations to provide teaching services and resources. And the partnerships include Mr. George Ramirez. He's the director for the Brownsville Society for the Performing Arts. He has been instrumental in leading the vision of this academy. Mr. Juan Burgos and Mr. Guillermo Vega from the Beas Artes Dance Academy, Ms. Mayte Sanchez from Allegro Ballet, Ms. Linda Chavez from the Brownsville Piano Studio, and Mr. Roman Gonzalez, Art From the Heart, a Roca initiative, and several of these individuals are here tonight. The lessons will be provided to at least 160 individuals for the year, including music, dance, and cultural instruction. And part of Roca's role will also include documenting all participants and ensuring that the majority of the individuals who participate are from low-to-moderate-income families. The next slide shows a picture of left-hand side. That's a large music classroom. It's on the second floor. On the right-hand side, you see the children practicing music currently at the Carlota Petrina Cultural Center. The music program will include piano, strings such as cello, violin, viola, double bass, and guitar, choir, paper orchestra. The second floor also holds six individual music rooms that would fit the student and the instructor, two larger music classrooms, which would fit about 14 students in each room, and one orchestra room, which would hold 40-member orchestra. In the next slide, you'll see the dance... One of the dance rooms. And in this picture, it's still painting the floor, but there's two large dance rooms on the first floor. It'll include ballet, ballroom, vocal, flamenco, jazz, and hip-hop. It's kind of small, the letter, but I leave it with a quote, as far as for the future, right? "The Brownsville Performing Arts Academy represents education and equality for our youth and for our citizens." And I really like this quote from Richard Riley, the former U.S. Secretary of Education. "I believe arts, education, and music, theater, dance, and the visual arts is one of the most creative ways we have to find the gold that is buried just beneath the surface. They, the children, have an enthusiasm for life, a spark of creativity, and vivid imaginations that need training, training that prepares them to become confident young men and women." And then I ended with more smiles on the right-hand side. Those are the children from the Buena Vida Dance Group that performed at the TSC, that opened up for the Ballet de la Pana group. And then on the left-hand side, instruction for music at Carlota Petrina. Are there any questions? That concludes the presentation.
Motion to approve? Is there a motion?
No.
Yes, it's in action.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, guys. Go get 'em.
We have consent agenda items A through G.
Can they approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Followed by the public hearings. Public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-012, is to allow a wireless communication facility in general retail 4C use in Dwelling Z, DZ, for a 5.10 acre tract of land out of a 24.5 acre tract located north of the Tahuachalito Banco in Share 1, Espirito Santo Grand, located at 8250 US Highway 281.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This property is 5.1 acres. It's currently zoned Dwelling Z. They are requesting a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility, which is a cell phone tower, and it's along 281. So, to the north of the property, there's going to be undeveloped land, single-family dwelling, and commercial business. To the east, west, and to the south is going to be undeveloped land and some single-family dwelling. Here's the zoning map. Everything that's in white is not inside city limits. If it's tan, then it's dwelling, which most of this area is. There were 19 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Here is the site plan. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in Dwelling Z, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Doesn't violate our ordinance with residential?
No, this one does not.
Anyone here on this issue?
Would it close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-013, CO, to rezon from general retail G, 4CG, to apartment H, AH, for a 7.215 acre tract of land out of a certain 8... 08.3 acre tract of land out of survey number 34, Share 19, Espirito Santo Grand, located near the intersection of Paredes Line Road and Coffey Port Road.
This property is 7.215 acres. It's currently zoned general retail, fourth commercial, and they're asking it to be rezoned to apartment H, AH, and it does front coffee. To the north, there's a commercial plaza and other commercial businesses. To the east, there's title company, single-family dwelling, and some commercial businesses. To the south, there's single-family dwelling. And to the west, there's fast-food restaurants, single-family dwelling, and commercial business. I will point out, this map is a little out of date. Right here is the Chick-fil-A, and right here is the Blue Wave. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, this property is currently zoned general retail 4CG. Along 802, most of the properties are general retail 4C. There are some apartments in the area. This property had 19 mailouts and zero successful written opposition. We did receive one. This is the opposition we received. It was 13.61%. It requires 20% to require a 3/4 majority vote.
Did the Planning and Zoning approve this?
The Planning and Zoning Commission supported it with a conditional overlay to restrict it to 144 units.
Oh, my gosh. 144 units?
Yes.
And...
That's dangerous.
Yeah, but the road is a two-lane, and it's in dire need of repair.
Yes. So, staff recommended not to support this rezoning from general retail G, 4CG, to apartment H. The future land use plan, this is part of the subregional node, which allows a density of nine units per acre. The 144 units would have 19.95 units per acre, which is much higher density. And we also did not support it based on viewshed protection of the... of the existing single-family neighbors.
With nine units per acre, that would be a total of 65 units. And at 19.95 units, which is, they requested, it's 144 units. So what they're requesting is a little bit over two times what would be allowable. So 65 units would allow 130 parking spaces, so we're talking about 130 cars. 144 units would require 288 spaces, that's 288 vehicles on this property, just for more context.
I just, I have concerns, because one, it's double the amount that we allow, but two, the fact that I have been requesting for the last, I don't know, six months to repair the road where the shoulder is eaten out, because there's so much traffic that uses that outdated. And I know it's submitted to the MPO for future changes, but it just is really hard to see that the city can't even repair the shoulder and then wants to double the traffic that these homes have to put up with.
It is not the city's request, it is the property owner that's requesting this. Staff's standpoint was not to support this.
Okay, thanks. I feel better now.
Isn't there a possibility of ingress and egress through the north, which is Village Center? It looks like there's a stoplight there, and it goes south. Would that be another option for ingress and egress to that property?
So that's not a public right-of-way? So they would have to make an agreement with the property owner to access through there?
That plaza?
Yes.
That's right there by Mr. Gaddis, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there is a stoplight there, however, it is not public, so we cannot say you have to access through there, it's the private property owner's.
So they would have to have a separate agreement with the private property owner to have ingress and egress?
Correct. Here is a map showing the subregional node in this area. We pointed out the density of some of the other apartments that are in this area. Sun Colony has 17.34, and Paseo Plaza has 12.14. In addition to this, both of these developments are along a major thoroughfare. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did support this rezoning from general retail G, 4CG, to Apartment H, AH, with a conditional overlay to allow a maximum of 144 dwelling units per acre. The request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Plan, as the subregional node allows a density of nine units per acre, not 19.95.
Thank you, that's very important to me.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here on this issue? Please, identify yourself and address the commission, please.
My name is Steve Gano. I'm a partner and general counsel in the Drennan Company. And if I may, let me pass out some of these.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me first address the turn lane. I don't know if you've been down Coffee Port today, but the city is actually out there reworking that turn lane right now. And I'll be showing you some pictures of that work. They have that road blocked off. My company bought this seven acres about three years ago, and our intention is to develop this as an apartment project. This Page One, the very first page, illustrates the existing access agreements that benefit this track. You'll see this track has two different easements that provide access out to 802 directly, excuse me, and one that goes directly out to Paredes Line Road. Two others go out to Coffee Port. When we develop this track, we intend to utilize all five access points. And frankly, because of the traffic flow in the area, we believe more of the tenants will go out towards 802 and directly towards Paredes Line Road than utilize Coffee Port. The second page in this is the arrow there indicates the location of the track in the zoning map. The information that was presented by planning is skewed a little bit to the west. If you look at this, to the right of our arrow on 802, there's two green areas. Those are two apartment projects on 802, about 1,000 feet from this project. If you look at Page Three, you'll see those two apartment projects. The one on the right is 25 units per acre. The one on the left is about 18 per acre. This is what we have asked for, is 20 per acre, 144 units. It would be most like the one on the left. Again, this is only about 1,000 feet from ours. Now, basically, this project would cost between $5 and $6 million to build. And that investment in this area, I believe the tax revenue generated for it could certainly be deployed by the city into the repair of that street. And that street, as I said, right now is under construction, and the turn lane is under construction. I've put some pictures on the back of this, and it might help to tear the first page off, because you'll see some red letters there that show. But A, Picture A is taken from the driveway on the east side, and it's looking across the street to the residential area. And you can see their brick wall and their trees there. The B is looking from across the street, down the street, Coffee Port. And you can see, actually, the construction crew is working there this morning.
Okay, I see how. I just talked to you this morning about it, yeah. Repairing the side road. Thank you, I'm sorry for my frustration.
Yeah. You can see, on the left, are the trees that are on the residential side. There's three houses over there. And on the right is our property, and you can see the trees there all along the right-of-way. Number, the next one is C. You can see, that's the work that they're doing right now, on widening that turn lane. D is taken from the same area, looking back across the street towards the residential area. And you can see the towering trees screening those houses from anything that goes on across the street. Turning and looking back at our property, again with E, you see the trees that are on that side of the road and which screen any development that we would put there. F is taken down at this other access point on Coffee Port, and is looking across the street. And it actually shows the motor grader that was working this morning. All these were taken this morning, by the way. And finally, G is taken from this location in our property, looking back towards Coffee Port Road. And as you can see, you can't even see Coffee Port through the vegetation. What we ask the city to do is to allow us to build a project there. While we would normally be allowed a 25-unit-per-acre density, we're only asking for a 20-unit-per-acre density, which is what Planning and Zoning approved. Now, one thing that Planning and Zoning did was they recommended that we be limited to two-story. That will kill this project. And also, a lesser number of units will kill this project. It won't be economically viable. So we ask that, basically, the commission approved the zoning. We are okay with it being reduced to a 144-unit count. And we ask that, instead of any kind of height restriction that is other than the provided in the zoning ordinance, that instead, we let the height be governed by Article 5, Section 348-893, which would be the optical section. And we will certainly comply with that. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions that any of the commissioners have.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question? No, okay.
So I have a question for the city. So currently, our ordinance allows how many units?
It does not allow, go ahead. So the current use district that the property has would not allow any apartments. What they're asking for tonight is a change to allow apartments, and they're asking for 25 units per acre, but the Planning and Zoning Commission capped that at the 19.95. What we're recommending is not to support the application at all.
Okay, thank you.
Therefore, be consistent with the future land use map and our zoning map. Stay commercial, which is with the cost of residential that we've seen and the road that we have. We believe that staying with the future land use map and the Comprehensive Plan recommendation is the way to go.
I agree with that, thanks.
Okay. Larry, is there someone else? Just a second, I think Larry stood up next, Bill. Let me, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I worked in Casa Pointiana, which is the old Hudson House. We have six acres there, and really, it's a beautiful spot. Most of the houses along there. Mr. Wilkinson is here, he's got, I think, 1.6 acres. Bill himself has probably about two acres. But the houses along there have nice, big yards, they have nice real estate with it. I was listening to the presentation prior to mine, and the number was quoted at $5 or $6 million. Do you realize that's $30,000 or $40,000 per unit? That's not gonna fit within our area. At $30,000 or $40,000 a unit, that's very cheap apartments. You know, we've got wall subdivisions. Are they gonna build a wall around it? We've got a two-lane road, one that goes this way and one that goes back. There are no shoulders. If you have 144 units, if you have 144 units, you know, is that gonna give green spaces? Is that gonna give walk-in, hike-and-bike trails, anything like that? And then, they want to do three stories. Are we supposed to sit there and look at each other through binoculars? I mean, they're gonna be looking right down at the houses with three-story. The road, can you imagine 144 units and they have kids? Where are they gonna catch the bus? On Coffee Port?
No sidewalks.
There's no shoulder. Are they gonna catch it on Paredes Line Road? I don't think so, because they'll probably, well, I don't think so. That's a very busy street also. At least on Coffee Port, or Jaime Zapata, excuse me, you have to stop. And so buses, you know, they're gonna take three or four minutes to load and unload. The traffic backs all the way around that curve. It's hard to get in and out. I don't know of any plans for the city to widen that at this point. But even if there are plans, it's gonna take a number of years before it happens. You know, we would love to see something nice. And we're not exactly, or I'm not exactly against having apartments there. What I would like it to do is fit within the neighborhood. $30,000 and $40,000 units are not expensive units, guys. The houses around there are a lot nicer than that. The green space, the people who bought into that area, you know, some of them got, a lot of them got discouraged the other night at Planning and Zoning, to be honest with you. But anyhow, that's my presentation. I would...
Thank you, Larry.
Request that y'all really think about it.
And just to let you know about the widening, there was a plan submitted to the MPO to widen that road, and I believe it was funded through the MPO, but it still is another, I think, 2021 finish date, so you are correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Bill, were you next?
He's not gonna help. He's not gonna help.
Good evening, esteemed alcalde, mayor, city commissioners, city staff. My name is Bill Hudson. I live across the street from the subject, 7.2 acres. I'm also happen to be the fellow who developed the 1,000 acres around there, from about a quarter mile to the east of the subject, about a mile and a half to the north of the subject, and about a mile to the, going east. So to me, and I want to say, first of all, I support what the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended, for a number of reasons. To be very brief, I live across the street from this. All of the 1,000 acres of excellence, as we call Paseo de la Saca, is subject to CCRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions, architectural control, which I control, the entity that controls the architectural control. And Drennan Companies have built very fine structures all over the state and even outside the state. I'm confident, well, because I hold the control over the architecture of the thing, it's not gonna be nice, and I live across the street. I actually grew up in the house where Mr. Holman offices. We sold that after my dad passed, and my dad passed in 92. We sold it to the Burton McCumber and Cortez, as it was at the time, 94, 95. They've done a great job of maintaining it and keeping it up. I hate the traffic just as much as anybody that travels Coffee Road, as it's called now. Interestingly, when I go to vote, they ask me, "Do you still live at the same address?" And I say, "I don't know." And they look at me like, "What?" And I say, "Well, I'm gonna ask City Commission, because they changed the name of my street three times." But that's just a silly anecdote. I support this. If you look at the Urban Land Institute or the National Association of Home Builders, covenants or recommendations for best practices. When you're doing a master plan, you go from single-family to multifamily, then into commercial. Right now, it's currently zoned commercial. He could have a whole strip center there with bars and pachangas and noise makers and disruptors, and more traffic than 144 units of multifamily will bring. I prefer to have residential across the street. I know the architecture will be good. Just to correct staff, there are in place easements to the benefit, and here to the benefit of the subject property, controlling access what I call the Chick-fil-A, and then along what I call the Autozone, the Coverspan, and then the, I don't know, he's got five access points besides the Coffee Road. We will restrict how many Coffee Port, Coffee Road accesses there are. We will. That's what basic architectural practice. Obviously, he's gotta work with traffic, city staff. So I'm as frustrated with traffic. Today, I went home for lunch, which had I known they were gonna close down the street and add in that, fix that turn lane, which has been part of the problem for the last year. Not for any lack of my calls, but people, city staff doesn't necessarily want to hear Bill Hudson calling. So I just want to let you know that in terms of best planning, this will be a good project as Planning and Zoning. I embrace it, I endorse it. I live across the street. My family, my little furry friends, my guests come and I live there. So I would rather have multifamily than more strip retail, which is currently zoned for. Just to go back, and we had these guys, some of the master planner guys, consultants here earlier, talking about how you need to do overlays and all this stuff. When I master-planned the 1,000 acres of excellence, that 4GC, that I zoned this, it could flip right into apartments with a 12.5 density. But because the City Commission, in its wisdom, changed the rules, so you actually have to go change applications, you have to change the zoning. In this case, this would require a higher density than the G. District G would be 12.5 units, it's currently zoned for. But fourth commercial G, as it is now, I'd rather see it as the AH, with the caveats that PMZ has already approved. So I pray that you will embrace this. And I'm the next-door neighbor, and I grew up in the place that Mr. Holman was speaking of. We all suffer the more traffic and... and the brownsville suffering, and it's probably a good thing. I get more flack than most of you guys, because I developed a lot of it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you, Bill.
God bless.
I just want to thank our city manager Noel Pernal for being the city staff member that finally listened to fix that shoulder. It will help a tremendous amount of people. So thank you, city manager, and sorry for my complaint earlier.
Mayor and commissioners, my name is Jim Wilkinson, and I live directly across from this project. I've been living there 20 years. I knew something was gonna go up there over the last 10 years, the way it's grown out there. I'm not opposed to a beautiful apartment complex, but I've seen some pretty shoddy ones in town. And I know Mr. Drennan is a fine man, friend. And I'm hoping he does an A1 job on this project. I'd rather not have it. I'd rather have homes there like ours. So, and there's another thing that traffic is, same old thing. On my side of the street, which is the south side, people go around cars and drive on my grass continuously. I've fixed ruts out there for 20 years. At least the last 10, when it really got bad. If there's any way you can put a curb there where people cannot drive around, because they get frustrated, they sit there sometimes, even 30 seconds, they don't want to sit there. They go around right on my grass. And they're gonna do the same thing on the other side, too, if you don't put a curb. And I would like a wall over there like everybody has in that neighborhood, where the apartments are, in two stories, three stories. They're gonna look at me mowing my lawn. I'm right there. I'm right next to, to the corner there, Pretus Line Road. So if you can, make sure this is a first-class project. If it does pass, get on him for that. He will do it, I think. He's got the money. So get on him about that. And that's all I have to say, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here on public hearing? Yes, or we can make it somewhat limited, but not restrictive.
My partner John Ritter and I have been developing here since the 1970s, and that we, for the most part, still own a lot of those properties. And we don't build and flip, we build and keep our properties. And so, we don't build shoddy properties. We build nice properties, durable properties. Regarding the school bus issue, one of the things that I'm sure will be required by the city when we put in our project is to put in a sidewalk. I don't know where it'll be located. I don't know what the plans are for improving the street, but I know from dealing with the city on other projects that we'll have to put in a sidewalk somewhere along there. And I presume that will handle wherever any bus stop might be. As far as widening the street, as I showed, that turn lane, all the way across the front of this, is being bladed right now, as we sit here. So, I think that that's gonna solve itself. And then the last thing, I simply wanted to reiterate that our, the five access points that are shown in blue on that Page 1 drawing, and that if you look at my photos, all of the trees along both sides of that street will screen any, any three-story structure there. And I would point out that from the retails, I mean, from the residential side, there's 30 feet of right-of-way, 25 feet of street, 30, 30 more feet of right-of-way. Then you get, that's the edge of our property. Then we have building setbacks and drives. So from their wall, which is on the right-of-way on their side, to where our first building would start, is something on the order of well over 125 feet. And where any third-story structure on this, because we plan to do a mix of two-story and three-story, would be on the order of, well, it'd be 90 feet behind the right-of-way on our side. So, what that means is that it'll be 175 feet, 185 feet from their back fence to where any three-story structure would be. And so, again, with 30-foot trees on either side of that road, it's not gonna be visible.
Are you still, on the 144, did I understand correctly that that would require still a third-story structure?
Partial. We think that at that density, it would be part two-story and part three-story. And, you know, we can work with our designers to put the three-story sections towards the rear or further back from that front, the right-of-way line across our-
So it's not entirely a three-story, the whole-
No, it's, it's a mix. And, and, you know, we have a fully engaged design at this point, because we don't know what the parameters are gonna be. But actually, our, our, our present thinking on it is we will do buildings that are both two- and three-story. There'll be two-story towards the street, there'll be a three-story section, and then there will be another two-story section. And if you look back at the Page 3, ours will be more similar to the one on the left, which is the 100, which is the 18 units per acre. And there is plenty of green space, and there is plenty of sparking, parking. And there are sidewalks throughout between the units. This is something that we expect to keep for a long time and actually pass on to our children, so. Again, we ask that this be approved. And understanding that we'll have to comply with, you know, the building code, et cetera, et cetera, and Section 348. Thank you.
Thank you. The question that I have for the, for you guys is the safety. You know, when you're talking about school buses and you're talking about the gentleman talks about, and I think I've been on that road at times when people do go beyond and around, and scares the hell out of me, to be honest with you. I, I just, you know, for some reason, Helen or someone enlightened me. Did you all look at the safety aspect of it, especially for our kids?
I think that's one of the reasons it's inconsistent with our codes, is because it's not safe. It's a two-lane road, and the type of retail that is permitted is a lower type of density of retail. And so, it was not envisioned to be an apartment, a three-story apartment with this many units. Even if it was approved, changed, and used from retail, general retail to apartment, the maximum number of units could be-
12.5 units per acre.
Right, which is about 85, 85 units. So even if we were just to change the street, so need from commercial to apartment, it would be a maximum of about 85 units, not the 144 that they're requesting. So it's way above what we would even consider, especially considering it was not meant to be apartments at that intersection. So my question is, we cannot confirm those points of ingress and egress that the applicant is stating. We haven't seen reciprocal easements agreements to show, because sometimes you have to be careful how close that curb is to the intersection. Usually, we have a certain amount of linear feet of site distance between that, those driveways and intersection of, or it is in Coffee or any, any corner intersection, so.
Anyone else here? I think, I think the concern here is a great balancing act of what you've got. My biggest concern is the safety. And, and I, you know, I believe in developers, and I believe in safety, and I believe in safety first before I believe in developers, so.
Motion to close public hearing? Can I, motion to-
Yeah, no, I'm gonna say-
Finally, if I would just say that if we're averaging 144 units at an average of three or 3.5 persons per unit, or just say three, you know, we're looking at, you know, possibly 300 to 400 people living there. So it's just something-
Anyone else here on this issue? If not, go ahead.
Motion to close public hearing?
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion to deny as per city staff?
Okay, there's a motion to deny as per city staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's a topic?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
I think that's what, 3-3? Aye?
Roll call?
You want a roll call, please?
Commissioner Neen?
Okay, the motion is to deny.
Yes.
Okay?
Aye.
And, and so it's, there's a yes by Ben, a no by Mungia, a yes by Commissioner Gallin, a yes by myself, a yes by Commissioner Tetra, and a no by Commissioner. So it passes up, the motion to deny is approved. You might want to try to think of some other way to solve this issue as we try to get, you know, things moving forward. Next item?
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-014 to rezone from Dwelling G, DG, to Medium Retail G, 3CG for a 0.894 acre tract out of the east 10.0 acre tract of Block 13, El Jardín subdivision, share 19, Espíritu Santo grant, located at 3271 Old Port Isabel Road.
This property is 0.894 of an acre. It's currently zoned Dwelling G. They're requesting to rezone it to Third Commercial G. This property, the next case is for the same property. It's a specific use for it. So to the north, there's going to be an assisted living facility and single-family dwellings. To the east, there's gonna be single-family dwellings. To the south, a convenience store and single-family dwellings, and to the west, undeveloped land. So here is the zoning map of the property. So most of the area is zoned dwelling. However, this area along Old Port Isabel is becoming more of a commercial area. There were 21 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from Dwelling G, DG, to Medium Retail G, 3CG.
Anyone here on this issue? Would close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Public hearing number 10, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-014 is to allow a duplex, a Dwelling D used in Medium Retail G, 3CG for a 0.894 acre tract out of east 10.0 acre tract of Block 13, El Jardín subdivision, share 19, Espíritu Santo grant, located at 3271 Old Port Isabel Road.
So this is the same property as the previous one. It is 0.894 acres. To the north, there's gonna be a home assisted living directly to the north, and north of that is a retirement resort and other single-family dwellings. To the east, there's gonna be single-family dwellings. To the south, convenience store and single-family dwellings. And to the west, undeveloped land. Here's the zoning map again. There were 21 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case as well. And here is the site plan. Everything that is on the site plan is currently existing. They lost their legal non-conforming status, and this will allow them to continue operating.
Anyone here on this issue?
Would close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Public hearing number 11, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-016 to rezone from General Retail G, 4CG, to Dwelling G, DG, for a 8.617 acre tract of land comprised of two tracts. Tract one being 5.389 acres, and tract two being 3.228 acres out of a 29.273 acre tract of land compromised of part of Lot 9, Block C, Bronzio Land and Improvement Company subdivision, and part of a 47.259 acre tract, and part of a 30.0 foot road as shown on plat of Bronzio Land and Improvement Company subdivision, shares 12 and 22, Espíritu Santo grant, located near West Morrison Road.
So this property is 8.617 acres. It's currently zoned Fourth Commercial G, and the property owner is requesting to rezone to Dwelling G. This property is near the next three cases. They're all for the same corridor along Morrison. They're requesting the same thing in all cases. So to the north, there's gonna be undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and civic institution. To the east, there's the abandoned railroad, undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and commercial business. To the south, and to the west, there's gonna be undeveloped land and single-family dwelling. Here is the aerial, um, excuse me, here's the zoning map. The other three parcels for the next three cases are right here. These parcels are all zoned general retail, fourth commercial, along with the West Morrison Road, expanding over to the expressway. This was done in a city-initiated case back in 2016. There were 46 mailouts and zero written oppositions. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from General Retail G, 4CG, to Dwelling G, DG. And the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
I have a question.
Okay, please come forward.
I have a question also.
My name is Andres Butierres.
Andres, nice to have you here.
Thank you, sir. I live just behind that site, right there, where they're talking about building this kind of apartments. Do you know what kind of apartments they're gonna be?
This is not for apartments. This is for single-family homes. They're wanting to rezone it from a commercial category to dwelling, so the only things that will be allowed are single-family homes or possibly duplex.
Are they gonna be compatible to the other homes?
It's going to be developed by the adjacent landowners. So the same developer that created your subdivision-
Okay.
Also owns these.
So it's gonna be the same homes?
It'll be very similar.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Andres.
It made me nervous, because of those apartments.
I know. You looked a little, you looked a little nervous. It's okay, we're all right.
Good to go.
You're good to go, my friend. Yes, sir.
That's a very scary thing to have in your neighborhood. 500 new neighbors.
Mayor, City Commissioner, my name is Ray McCorquill. I represent the, the developer that, that wants to convert this from, from the commercial to dwelling. And yes, we built all the homes, both north and south of the property, and we are going to continue the, the same type of homes along that corridor and on both sides.
Well, I think he's happy already.
Okay, very good.
Good to go.
Motion to close public hearing? I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do I ask after they close the public hearing?
No.
No, go ahead.
So I have a question. Are those homes going to face Morrison Road or face internally?
No plat has been submitted at this time, so I could not tell you.
He answered.
Does the direction? And does the direction that the house faces dictate whether or not the sidewalk ordinance is in effect? In other words, is, is the sidewalk ordinance required in front of the house or also behind the house along Morrison Road?
It's required on all right-of-way, so.
And it will be the same size? It's a multi-use trail. It's not a regular sidewalk? I'm looking at the gentleman behind you.
Well, I, I think the requirement would be a standard size.
No.
As far as the subdivision. And, and my, I just wanted to bring up that we played a big part in Morrison Road, Mr. Simmons did. And we participated with the city to get Morrison Road put in. And, and I know there's, there was a lot of money put in, into that for one side of the sidewalk already that has never been put in. I don't know if you're aware of it.
I'd like an opinion from staff.
There's no sidewalks on Morrison on this?
But the ordinance dictates.
There would be a, a sidewalk would be required on all right-of-way, whether the right-of-way is currently developed or they will be developing it. So yes, even if the homes are faced internally and away from Morrison, they will be required to provide adequate sidewalks.
What is adequate?
So typically, when it's going through a subdivision process, when it's something like this, we ask the developer to construct it and to match the neighboring sidewalks.
If I'm not mistaken, the ordinance is written such that if there is a multi-use sidewalk in, that it touches, it must match that size, which is larger than a standard sidewalk. This is important, because it means that if that trail is continued at that size, the city doesn't have to strike the roads for bicycles and, or pedestrians, and it's safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. You've noted a school in the area. You've noted a school in the area, it makes it safer for children to ride or walk to school.
Yes, it will be required, and it will need to match.
Helen?
Yes, we look, what we can do is with the approval of this zoning, we can require through our subdivision code that it matches and be consistent with it. Given the fact that it's a Morrison Road, an important arterial road, we can review that and ensure that it is done as part of this approval process.
Thank you.
Okay, make sure that happens.
Can I just?
To ensure, you could add it as a condition in this rezoning tonight.
Then I would make, is the public comment closed?
No.
Did we close the public comment?
No.
I think he wanted to say something else.
What I think is important is as we develop property along the road, even though there may be undeveloped property, it is the onus of the developer to, you know, we talked about today in Verdunity's presentation, is the need for developers to pay for infrastructure. And if this is an important infrastructure road, then it needs to be consistent with that policy, and our codes are consistent with that. So we would ensure that that is part of that requirement. Morrison Road is a wonderful road and it can be that way.
And I totally agree. We're going to do whatever is required of us. But I just want staff to research that, because we played a part, like I said, in that road, and money was put in for sidewalks. So, and we have no problem with doing what we have to do. We understand what the subdivision code is, and we've always followed it. But I just feel that we participated in a big way, Mr. Simmons did, money was put in for sidewalks, so I'm just hoping that that's looked into.
Yeah, make sure, make sure we follow the law.
Yeah.
Okay, because I think it's part of what we did some time back.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you all. Anyone else here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Motion to approve with the stipulations we just discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Public hearing number twelve, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero one seven to rezone from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG for a one point zero one five acre tract of land out of a forty-seven point two fifty-nine acre tract, share twelve, Espirito Santo grant located near West Morrison Road.
This property is across the street from the previous one, with the same surrounding uses, the same zoning area. There were thirteen mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
I would recommend having the same condition on this one, as well as the next two as well.
Sure. Is anyone else here?
Motion to close public hearing? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve with the same stipulations.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Public hearing number thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero one eight to rezone from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG for a two point nine two three acre tract of land out of a forty-seven point two fifty-nine acre tract, share twelve, Espirito Santo grant located near West Morrison Road.
This is a nearby parcel as well, in the same corridor, with the same surrounding uses, with the same zoning map. In this case, there were twenty-nine mailouts and zero written opposition. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG.
Motion to, oh.
Anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve with the same stipulations.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Public hearing number fourteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero one nine to rezone from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG for a three point eight two nine acres comprised of part of lot nine, block C, Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, and part of a forty-seven point two fifty-nine acre tract, and part of a thirty point zero foot road as shown on plat of Brownsville Land Improvement Company subdivision, all in share twelve, Espirito Santo grant located near West Morrison Road.
This property is along the same corridor, with the same surrounding uses, with the same zoning map. In this case, there were thirty mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezone from general retail G four CG to dwelling G DG.
Anyone here on this issue? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve with the stipulations discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment period. We have Mr. Larry Holman.
I just want to say that the West Rail Trail Group, item number nineteen, we're behind you. We want the thing to work out right. And please, the only thing that I request is just keep us informed, because there's so many rumors going around.
I'm sorry, sir, we're not supposed to discuss any public comment in regards to any agenda items, just to remind you.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Mr. Bill Berg.
No, I don't look like Bill Berg. He had to sit down and I agree, because we asked him to read this for him. But because I agree, I won't be able to read exactly.
We have three minutes.
I have three minutes, and let's start running. He's very concerned about voter turnout, that Brownsville, in fact, has very low voter turnout. And when he has talked to his students over the years, the problem is that they think that what they do doesn't matter. And he believes that when people are, they finally do vote for somebody, they need to see the person does what he says or what she says she'll do, so that they know, in fact, their vote matters. So he would like to see that people who run for office and win actually do what they promised to do, so that they know it mattered, that it was worth voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is action item number sixteen, consideration and appropriate action, if any, to vacate the prior city commission action taken at the meeting of March fifth, twenty nineteen, purporting to award the waste services contract to a specific bidder.
Okay, this is, this is an action item.
Move to approve?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seventeen.
Item, action item seventeen, consideration and appropriate action, if any, to reject all proposals, bids, and amendments submitted in response to RFP CIS dash four seven dash zero nine one seven to the city of Brownsville.
Would approve and reject?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number eighteen, consideration and appropriate action, if any, authorizing the city manager to identify a qualified provider to provide commercial and industrial solid waste disposal services for the city of Brownsville and to negotiate a contract for such services consistent with the city's police powers and subject to review and approval by the city commission.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number nineteen, consideration in action on a memorandum of agreement between the city of Brownsville and Cameron County regarding the West Rail Corridor.
Mayor, City Commission, this is the same MOU that was in executive session two weeks ago. It was passed by the county at about ten-thirty this morning, and we ask for your support. This is about eight years' worth of work or more to get to this point, so it is a good day for Brownsville and a good day for the West Rail.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Let's move forward on this project.
Action item number twenty, consideration and possible action to accept a legacy foundation grant in the amount of five hundred thousand for Cannery Public Market and commit two hundred and fifty thousand match as recommended by city manager.
So, Mayor, City Commission, this is another, I think it's an exciting project, the Cannery Public Market project. And so about, I want to say about six months ago, you passed an MOU for us to work together with the Brownsville Wellness Coalition, the Food Bank, and us to put together a food hub in Brownsville. So we took that to task, and we started to work and identify a site. So why the Cannery Public Market? It's quality of life improvement, it's the creation of additional gathering space. When you take, when you take the success of Market Square and what that has become and that what it will continue to become, this is just another one of those projects. It will also include a small, food-oriented, small-business economic development, a kitchen incubator is what it's called. The improvement of our entrance into downtown, this is a premier property on Sixth Street. Expansion of healthy food access by expanding farmer's market hours and perishable food from Food Bank of the RGB. It does, it does fall in line with the Robert Wood Johnson culture of health that we've, that we've been awarded. And it'll be an attraction, as it has for all other cities, a lot of cities, for outside visitors to the district downtown and Gladys Porter Zoo. So when we think about other cities, a lot of cities, you know, when you go visit a city, usually sometimes you go to a market. If you're me, I go to all the markets where I go. But it's really just kind of a cool space to go and really get to know the community and eat local food and all that kind of stuff. So these are kind of, the eastern market is a really popular example in DC. There's two eastern markets, eastern market in Detroit, that's a wonderful, wonderful example. Milwaukee, it's a much smaller city than Detroit, but Milwaukee also has their own public market. And Grand Rapids, Michigan also has a very similar type of structure and use. Probably the most local example, well-known example, I don't watch the show, but Chip and I don't know who, Joanna, they took an old silo in Waco and created it into a market. And so it is now an attraction in Waco. I know people that go to Waco to go to this site. So what's the vision? The vision was the Ringled Artisan Market, we call it the Cannery Public Market, and I'll get into it. It was in the twenty fifteen Midicultural District Plan, so you can see that there's, obviously you'll see, you'll see a lot of renderings, and we're going to get down to a final design. The location is the half-can, if you want to call it, on Sixth and Ringel. And this is the current condition of that building. It's about ten thousand square feet, and we believe that we can fit a lot of these activities in this building. This is what it looks like inside. We have listened to the community, we partnered up with TSC to look at some designs, look at some options. This is kind of a stakeholder engagement process, a charade. And the students came up with the conceptual vision of this project. And it really is a, you know, like the other markets that I just showed you. And so you see a variety of these things, and we'll work to find, to make it a final design. So when we think about moving to implementation and creating this food hub, like I already said, we passed an MOU about six months ago, and these are our partners, our partners are the Food Bank, the Food Bank is here, Omar and Libby are here, the Wellness Coalition, there's also a couple of board members, and Veronica as well. And so we applied for a legacy foundation grant, thinking that we weren't going to get it, like we all do with every grant. And our grant writers did a great job, and so we were awarded a five hundred thousand dollar grant. We've also further applied to USDA Healthy Food Financing Initiative. Noel and I had a, the opportunity to meet with USDA, they were really excited about the project. And that's really to fund the incubator component. And the incubator component is, the story I told in DC was, the grandmother makes the tamales, trying to make her legit so that she can sell them legally, right? And they fell off their chair and said, we want to fund that. So hopefully, we'll, hopefully they'll fund that. USDA market, I also found that has a food hub design division. And so we call that in-kind services, they, the guys already visited Brownsville, are working on narrowing that design. So the project total is, as of now, is nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, about a million dollars. The local project contribution, if you approve the two hundred and fifty thousand from the city today, is twenty-five percent. So seventy-five percent will be paid by external money, twenty-five percent will be paid by us. So that's a pretty good leverage. The overview, obviously the location is Seventh and Ringel, the program's a commercial kitchen, a farmer's market, a mobile market, a school tools program from the Food Bank, the partners are the city of Brownsville, the Wellness Coalition, the Rio Grande Valley Food Bank, Las Imagenistas. And I put others, because who knows what other partners will have? I'm sure there will be a lot. And the funding, Valley Baptist, Healthy Food, we hope to find out in about a month. US Design Services as well. And once again, I really believe that this project will get some momentum and will get more funding as we go along. So we ask for your approval tonight, and.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, go for it.
Action item number twenty-one, consideration in action to approve amendment six regarding architectural services for the Brownsville Performing Arts Academy building.
Mayor, Commissioners, I don't know if it's me, or it's you, or it's all of us, but I feel we're moving forward, and there's a lot of momentum going on. So this is, this one's in the making since two thousand and thirteen, is to finally get the final amendment, final done for the Stagman Building to be open. You saw the great Buddha of Roka here. Once we get this is done, this is done, this is it. We're just closing out the building, get it done. So I thank you, and we get some applause for this one, too. Thank you.
But I need a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great work, Mike, thank you.
Action item number twenty-two, consideration and possible action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero twenty-eight to execute the resolution in support of the concept of the merger of the three Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organizations into one valley-wide metropolitan planning organization based on the proposed NPO designation term sheet.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Before we take the ball, just a reminder, legal was instructed that we implement this with the recommendations of council in regards to the additional.
That's correct.
Changes.
Is that, is that okay?
My apologies.
Yeah, sure. In other words, the motion is to approve with, including all of the attorneys, our attorneys' recommendations that are not substantive but are part of what we need to have, like attached exhibits, et cetera. And there's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Nay on that.
Action item twenty-three, consideration in action to award supplemental agreement number one to Maxwell Asphalt Inc. to Seal Code Runway eighteen dash thirty-six.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. We would like to just award the supplemental agreement to the asphalt company that did the resealing on one three three one. So this is just an expansion of the existing funding from the FAA.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brian, I just wanted to say that I flew in two weeks ago from Detroit, and I picked up my daughter Friday, and I was totally amazed at the difference in just two weeks. Great job, keep it up.
Thank you.
Keep, keep going, Brian, keep going, my friend.
Action item number twenty-four, consideration in action to award task order number five to Jeviation Inc. for construction management services and associated with Seal Coating Runway eighteen dash thirty-six.
This is ancillary to the same project, this is project management for it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Action item number twenty-six, consideration in action authorizing the city manager to execute NPO consultant firm agreement for professional services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. The contract before you, the city of Brownsville is the fiscal agent for the NPO, we would use the federal monies to undertake these professional services. We'll get a lot of valuable information about our delay on our certain roadways, and then we'll get ideas about how to mitigate and ameliorate the congested roadways, and And also we'll get some evaluation of some of the strategies the NPO has employed in past investments. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll try to address them.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item number twenty-seven, consideration in action to adopt the city of Brownsville Census twenty-twenty logo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Myrna Leal. I'm a planner with the Plowing Development Services Department as well as the Census Lead for the city of Brownsville. Uh, so just to give you some background, um, staff from the planning department as well as the library services department and the public information services department got together. We did some brainstorming. We talked about some ideas and slogans, uh, for logos and slogans, I'm sorry. Uh, various logos were presented to the city of Brownsville Complete Count Committee and the following logo was selected. "Let Yourself Count and Deja Te Contar." Uh, this is the logo that we have selected for the twenty-twenty census. Um, it is important that the logos are in English and in Spanish. And then it came to the topic of choosing a color. So with community engagement, the official logo was unveiled at the Census Day RGV One Year in Counting event that we had on April first. Uh, members of the public were invited to vote through the city of Brownsville twenty-twenty census Facebook page from April first through April twelfth and a survey monkey was, uh, made public through not only our Facebook page, through the city email and I believe, uh, the city of Brownsville website as well. These are the options. This is option number one. Option number two. And option number three. This is how we did the vote, through social media. Uh, we did try to do a poll, but for the poll on Facebook, it only gives you two options. So we made sure that people could like, love or wow their favorite logo. Um, I will note that on the Facebook voting, um, option number one, uh, which is the like and option number three, which is the wow emoji, were tied. Uh, what did break the tie was the survey monkey. And so these are the results, eighty-six, thirty-eight and a hundred and fifteen. So what we're asking for you is to go ahead and approve our official colors for our logo for the city of Brownsville.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All, all those in favor say aye.
You do have to choose one though.
Oh, option three. I'll go with option three 'cause everybody likes it. Um, motion to approve, option three?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Day's over.